This conference will now be recorded.
One o'clock, Wednesday, February 21st. I work at the Mitchell County Courthouse. It's available by going to the meeting also. We have agenda in front of us. If anybody need to approve the agenda.
I approve the agenda. I got you.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Motion, second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Discussion of fiscal action on Kepheart, forceful entry and detainer action.
Okay, I appreciate you being here on short notice. Don't take any more of your time than necessary, but I wanted everybody to be kind of apprised of what's going on. As you know, I think, I think you know, I don't remember what I always said to everybody, but county was issued a tax deed not all that long ago, probably late January. And, but of course, as is sometimes the case, once you get that tax deed, in order to get possession of the property, you have to file what's called a forceful entry and detainer action, right? I mean, you know, most of the time in most tax sale situations, I would say you probably don't have to do that because most of the time there's nobody possessing the property, right? That's, I mean, that's why it's that tax sale. This case is a little different. This case is a little more like if you have a renter or you have somebody that's on the property that the lease is terminating or whatever and you need to have them off the property. It's what you do with a forceful entry and detainer. Do the same thing in this kind of a situation when the county's now got a tax deed, but somebody's still in possession of the property. You file a forceful entry and detainer to get a court order to get them removed. Prior to doing that, you file a notice to quit. You have the person served a notice to quit, three day notice to quit, saying, you know, please vacate the premises by on this occasion or else I'm going to file a forceful entry and detainer. So in this case, I had a notice to quit served upon Mr. Kepheart. And then after expiration of the number of days, I think I waited maybe four, I think, because there was a weekend involved in there. Anyway, I did, did file a forceful entry and detainer action. Believe the date I filed that was last Friday. Mr. Kepheart was served, I believe, that same day. Under the law, and I'm kind of summarizing paraphrasing here a little bit, so I might not have all the details in here, but basically, what the law states is the judge has to have a hearing on a forceful entry and detainer within eight days of filing, unless the plaintiff, which in this case would be the county, consents to it being held later. But even then, it has to be done within 15 days. Most of the time, most forceful entry and detainer actions are filed in small claims court. In this particular case, since it involves a tax deed, small claims court does not have jurisdiction, so district court has jurisdiction. So what you end up trying to do is coordinate then, what's the date going to be? Well, we have court here every two weeks and sometimes getting judges specially scheduled working things can be, become a headache. So anyway, and that's one of the reasons I did consent to it being after the eight days because I thought, well, if I demand to be within eight days, I don't know what's going to happen anyway because I don't know if there's going to be a judge available to come over here and do it. But it got set for, I believe it's the 27th at 3:30 PM. That's a regular district court day. And forceful entry and detainer actions, you don't necessarily ever know for sure how they're going to go. They end up being more complicated than they ought to be. But in any way, so that's kind of the background of where we are. Mr. Kepheart's attorney, Mike Byrne, has reached out to me and asked if we, meaning the county, would be willing to give Mr. Kepheart until June 25th to basically be off the property. I replied that, in my view, if it were just me talking, I don't have the email with me, I'm paraphrasing, but I indicated that. Me personally, county attorney, the only way I would really be interested in something like that was if a court were to grant our forceful entry and detainer now, immediately. You know, basically saying, I mean, I'm not trying to be too colloquial, but you know, basically saying, county, you win. You win on your forceful entry and detainer, you win. And then I would also, this is why I said it would also be my preference that in addition to have a judge enter that order, as part of that order, it would also have to be stipulated that, come that date, then a writ of removal issues I could ask for from the judge. I could email the judge and say, judge, here's the order, attach a signature to it. I don't want to, I don't want to have to give notice to anybody. I don't want to have to have another hearing. I don't want to come back for more court proceedings. I don't want to do any of that. That on that date of June 25th, the judge can enter, the writ of removal, to have everything removed if for some reason it's not by that time. And, except there was something else I was going to say on that point, but I can't remember what it was. But, so I would want that, you know, stipulated that the order grant county's request for forceful entry and detainer now, enter that order now. And, and the court order would also say that the county and Mr. Kepheart has until June 25th to get his stuff off there. Is what I was going to say. Regardless of whether he has his stuff off of there by June 25th, I would still want a writ of removal entered, right? I mean, so let's say June 25th comes and he's all cleared. I mean, everything's good. I would still want the judge to enter that writ of removal just to kind of, if nothing else, close things out, right? Just so things aren't hanging out. So, I don't know. If Mr. Kepheart put it back, you know, I have no way of knowing whether he would have his things removed by June 25th or not. Quite a bit out there. So he, there's a, you know, his attorney did kind of give me a plan of how he expected it would go. The timeframe, I don't know.
So he would completely clean up the property?
No, hell, no.
They were good.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Can the court order also say that the materials removed from the New Haven property shall not be transferred to within Mitchell County in violation of the ordinance?
No.
Because I don't, I can see him moving, getting somebody and moving it to someone else's farm and then we've got it moved somewhere else.
I can see, I can, I can see that happening too. I've already given this thought some issue. I don't think there's any possible way to do that ahead of time.
So it just went starting around zero.
Well, you might. We might be moving from one problem to another, but we might be doing that anyway.
He's already moved it, moved somewhere. Some of it? To another spot in Haven. South of New Haven on Cheltenham? Whoever owns the, who owns all the chicken? Who's that guy?
Well, I think maybe I, I know, but I don't know what I'm saying.
I didn't know if that was something we do because I just don't know if we're just moving into another, we passed by.
We might be. But I think we're probably going to be doing that. I mean, if we went to the hearing on Monday and the judge granted our relief, sheriff's here, he's done these things before and I'm trying to put you on the spot. But typically what would happen is if we went to hearing on Monday and if the judge granted our relief, granted the forceful entry and detainer, he would then issue a writ of removal, right? The sheriff would get that, would remove the property. A question of where would it go, sheriff? What would you do?
I'd treat it as the way the county cleaned it up before.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
So we're going to have endowers and county dump trucks and scrapyard.
Take it on scrap material.
And that's what would have to happen, right?
I mean, costs would be taken out of that and everything else returned to, you know, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, you know, sometimes if you're evicting somebody out of an apartment building, you know, I mean, I think sometimes you might actually end up putting their stuff out on the curb, right?
Well, that's what the code says. I mean, I don't do it, they have to have approved. I oversee that, that's where it goes.
But in this case, can't do that, right? So if the, if the judge were to grant the forceful entry and detainer and issue a writ of removal, then that's what would happen. You know, the sheriff's kind of described that process. This way, and I guess I'm thinking in my head, and that's why I, that's why I asked for this to be set. I mean, I want you guys' guidance, I guess.
So if we go that route and then we remove the stuff, it won't give them a chance to move it to a different location?
Well.
Because once we do that, then that's our property. Is there anything there?
I don't know that I would characterize it as county property.
Still personal property.
It's, yeah, it's still going to be his personal property. This is what, this is, this is a situation that is just, it's different. So here's what would happen. I'm speculating. But I could see this happening. So on the one hand, if a writ of removal enters, the judge says, remove the stuff. It's going to be a little different than usually when you take something and put it on a curb. The sheriff just described what the process would be, in his opinion. So to Mark's point, that makes sense. It'd be like, well, it would be removed somewhere where, where he wouldn't be, have access to it, the staff is somewhere else. What I could see happening, none of this would happen, what I could see happening, then Mr. Kepheart, through his attorney, I mean, I guess if I represented him, this is what I would do. I would probably then file something with the court and say, okay, judge, you've issued the writ of removal, but this is going to take a certain period of time anyway. So give us a certain amount of time to get the stuff out of there. I don't know whether a judge would grant it or not. I can't speak to that. I don't know whether, whether a judge would.
Personal property, they probably would.
You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, the judge might, I can't, I don't, I'm not going to be, I can't speculate. I mean, I am speculating, but I can't say. But I could see where there, I mean, I guess if I were representing Mr. Kepheart, that's what I would do. If the judge issued the writ of removal, then I would say, well, I've got stuff there, judge. Give me time to move it off. I could see where a judge would say, okay, I'm going to give you a certain amount of time to remove it.
Took us 30 days last time, October 8th to November 11th. Wasn't those days?
So, so Mark's point is a good one. Whether it would actually work that way, I guess it depends on maybe what a judge would do.
30 days, we hold on less than June 25th.
Yeah, well, that, that's why I'm, I'm here, I guess, to figure out if, now. I will also say this. I have followed all of the procedures to the best of my ability in this whole process as far as required notices before the tax deed, in as far as the tax deed, and then what's happened afterwards with the notice to quit, the forceful entry and detainer. Done my absolute best to comply with all the statutory case law requirements, of which there are always several. I'm not aware, I mean, obviously if I was aware I missed anything, I would correct it. I don't think I missed anything. That doesn't mean, you know, for example, you know, we get there Monday and some issue comes up and somebody says, oh, no, no, wait, this, this wasn't done right. And then the whole thing gets delayed anyway. My opinion is forceful entry and detainer is a summary remedy, which means, in my opinion, my understanding, that's not a phrase that's really defined that well in the law other than the phrase summary remedy. My opinion of what that means is it means, okay, we're here, we're going to decide this thing now. We're not kicking the can down the road and we're not going to come back and do this and fight about this. My understanding of a summary remedy is that you, the court sets a hearing, allows a certain amount of time. You go in, we present our facts, the judge rules. Now, I don't know that's the way it would work, right? If somebody decides to raise objections, is the court just going to say, I can't decide this today. I'm going to kick the can down the road, even though I argue and say, no, no, you're not supposed to do that. It might happen anyway. And so what I'm getting at is, is these forceful entry and detainer acts to be a lot more complicated and convoluted than they ought to be. I use the example, there's, I'm not going to get too specific, but if I were the case, that, I'm familiar with the lawyer who brought the case, Hancock County, I believe, and I think it took about four times of bringing an action back to, to get the judge to enter a removal because the issues kept being raised that really weren't issues, but it kept kicking the can down the road. So that's, you know, what I would be concerned about here. I far, I don't know what he's going to do with the stuff if he removes it. I guess like Cindy said, she already got an idea where it's going. But to a certain extent, then I can't speak for those people. You know, it's like, what, are they going to allow it to go there? Apparently, I don't know. I mean, I wouldn't if I owned it, but I can't speak for them. So I don't know whether we'll end up chasing this forever, I have no idea. So the, you know, if, if, if the proposal were to go through that gives some clarity, it's a little bit delayed, but it's clarity, at least regarding that property. If we go to hearing on Monday, things come to a head a little quicker with maybe a little more uncertainty. I'd get, I'd be interested, want everybody else here's things. Including Sheriff Shannon, everyone, all of you. Rachel, whoever.
Can we ask for like noticeable completion by certain dates? So that he's not just dragging his feet and then June 23rd he starts working on it? And if he's out of there earlier, then we get it earlier? I'm just trying to think about some of the incentivize because I don't think.
I mean, the weather is good now, there's no sun.
Yeah.
There's no reason.
It's not sunny.
To take out June, you know. You know, there's no weather issues.
I don't want to, I'm trying to go to the sheriff, you got any thoughts?
Cindy, back.
Well, I know what caused the county to clean it up last time. If he wants till June, he puts that amount of deposit down with the county right now. And maybe just lay it back when it's cleaned up. And if he doesn't and we have to clean it up, he's paying for it under the county.
Everybody heard on the radio, play county recycling, which is used to be cars recycling there advertising, you know, bring your junk to us or we will come and get it too.
The roads department does a lot, we get a lot of checks from them.
You get a lot of what?
Checks from them, they recycle metal there, the roads already does.
But, but I mean, they, they got, you know, escalators, somebody, they come and get whatever too.
Give it to June or go hearing on Monday?
Well, we would have to have, probably have to have a hearing in order to get the financial part of it in place and him to agree to that. But then he leaves a security deposit with the county of 25,000 bucks and we have to tell June. If it's not cleaned up, then we have his money to clean it up.
Well, the special assessment was 18,897 dollars. And we've got 11,600 in interest.
Is a viable option? I don't know.
That was my other question is, is that now that we own the property, we need to bait the taxes off it. At some point, that's a different process.
Yeah, that's.
But I don't want him to come in next month and.
That's done.
He has rights to.
Well, I mean, it's not quite as simple as I said, but.
They're not going to fight the.
I don't know that, I don't know that he can come in there now and just say, oh, I want to back up and redeem the property. I think.
He can't, that's all closed. That should be all done.
So I mean, if somebody came in and paid the taxes, I don't think that changes a damn thing where we are now. So I wouldn't be smart for him.
Aaron, I have a question if you, can you guys hear me? Aaron, can you hear me?
I can.
You can? Okay, I have a lot of road noise, so I apologize if some of this has already been said. But the way I took it, you said that there's a possibility that they would agree to a, a four month thing if, if it would give him four months to get rid of his stuff. And so I guess I'm wondering if that's what you said. And also then if he doesn't have the stuff about four months, does the stuff become our property then? Is that how that is?
So what is being proposed is that there would be four months to get the stuff off or until June 25th, which I think is four months and a few days. But, but anyway, so frankly, as I, so as I understand it, what would happen is if June 25th comes and there's stuff on there, that does not automatically become the county's property. But what, what happens is the sheriff is then directed and authorized to vacate the premises, to move everything off. And so that's the whole point of this. I mean, that's the big question in this case is, okay, where does the sheriff move it to and what happens to it then?
Okay, so, so we own the stuff after the four months, correct?
I don't think you automatically do. I think, so here's what would happen, as I, as I see it. If, and then I think this would, this would probably be the case regardless. So at some point, whether it was sooner or whether it was in June, if the judge issued a writ of removal, you know, and I've got a copy of it here of what the typically would say. Basically just, it's pretty short, tells the sheriff to go out and remove the stuff, right? Well, then that's, the question is, is like, well, so in a typical forceful entry and detainer, what would happen is, as I understand it, the sheriff can correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's like an apartment or a rental house, you might end up moving stuff out. You move it out on the curb and it's still the defendant's property. He can come get it, take it, do whatever he wants with it. But, but he better get it off the curb pretty quickly or else it's going to be gone. In this case, you know, I guess there's a question that would have to be answered either way, and I don't know how it's going to work, is the date comes, writ of removal issues and sheriff goes out and removes the property, where's it go? I think the sheriff's kind of indicated where it would go. But again, so no, I, I think you're kind of getting into that no man's land. I think, so when the writ of removal issues, I don't think that means what's on there becomes the county's property. Because technically, the county already has legal title to the real estate, but not the personal property. Forceful entry and detainer action is meant to take possession of the real estate. So it's, this is my land, get your stuff out of here. And then, like I said, you know, if he doesn't get it out, the sheriff will. And like I said, at that point.
If, I guess, looking at it as far as one step and the next step, the first step is to get him out of there. That's maybe the first step. And if we have this hurdle of, of the stuff later on, well, I guess then we're going to have to cross that hurdle. But we need to do something. We can't just say, well, I guess we don't know what we're going to do now. I mean, we, we need to move forward and get him out of there.
That's what I mean. We need to decide, you know.
If he says June 25th, can we go back and say May 1st? Does it look?
We can propose whatever we want, yeah.
We propose that, goes attorney and see what, who's for.
April 1st.
Was that?
April 1st.
Yeah, well, I would just, we can do whatever. I would like to get something kind of decided. So we don't have to call these meetings every few days because that's going to be difficult for me to do in the next several weeks just because of various other things I have.
I think the one month was a crew. If these don't even solve two months of the reasonable questions.
At least if we get an attorney to agree to it, that after a certain date, that's ours. We're giving them a chance to get out.
Yeah, that's what we're here to try and decide, you know, if you want me to propose anything. I'm going to keep that date set for Monday. Unless. Yeah, Tuesday. Unless we get something else resolved. And we could just wait, you know, we could just have the hearing on Monday or Tuesday. I keep saying Monday, I know it's Tuesday. We could just have the hearing on Tuesday and see what happens.
We can tell the judge, it took the crew 30 days. We don't want him four months, maybe two months. Yeah, since it's him. If they do set a date, I don't, I think June's pretty generous.
What I'm probably going to do, if we end up, if we end up going to a hearing on Tuesday, I'm prob, my attitude is probably going to be, at that point, it's like, okay. I get a lot less negotiable once time goes on and we get somewhere. So if we end up Tuesday and there's no agreement in place, my information most of the time is just to say, look, I'm not agreeing to anything now. We're just going to have the hearing, judge is going to decide, judge is going to tell you what to do. I'm probably not going to propose one month, two months, three months. I'm probably going to say, judge, here's a writ of removal. Please sign it. And and then the stuff starts one way or the other. Like I said, he may come in and ask for more time. And if he did, I would cross that bridge when I came to it. And I probably, I mean, I'm probably, most likely, at that point, my attitude's probably going to be, I'm not agreeing to a damn thing. Judge, you do what you want to do, but I'm not agreeing to anything. Like I said, I get a little chippy once things get closer and once I have to walk into a courtroom, then I typically. then I typically get a little less quiet, so, you know, we, we can just keep that hearing set for Tuesday. Uh, like I said, I can't guarantee what's gonna happen, my interpretation of the law, my experience as that judge, you need to decide something now. Um, but my practical experience also tells me that a lot of times this stuff ends up being drug added. So, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, we could end up having a hearing on Tuesday and nothing being decided till summer anyway, I don't, I don't know.
Like the last time you cleaned it up, that was his property at that time too, right? Did the judge say you could just clear it off?
See, in that case, that was what Mark Walk handled, so I don't wanna get too far ahead of myself and, um, say what happened, I'm familiar with what happened, but I don't know that I've looked at all the paperwork, 'cause I understand that, I think, uh, what was used in that case was state code that says the, uh, county can declare something as a nuisance, give so much notice, and then after that, the, uh, county goes in and abates the nuisance. And so in that case, I don't remember where all that stuff ended up, um, but.
Same situation.
But it's a little different, abating a nuisance is a little different than a forceful entry and detainer, 'cause if, if you're abating the nuisance, the ju, you're basically, and in that, in that event, I don't think a court was involved. So I think that was, there's a procedure under Iowa code where, like, the county, and I think maybe even the city, can declare things a nuisance, et cetera, et cetera, um, then, then there's varying opinions from attorneys on whether it's wise to use that, or to go through judicial action to have the protection of a court order, so if you do something wrong, you can rely on the court order. Um, but anyway, that, I don't know, the sheriff might know, I don't know where all that stuff ended up. I think it got junked, I don't know if somebody sold it.
It went to recycling, it went to recycling, got receipts and stuff on that, wild horse trading scrap metal recycling.
So I, I don't, but I don't know that, so, in an abatement of a nuisance, there's probably certain leeway to dispose of the property that you don't necessarily have in a forceful entry and detain. A forceful entry and detainer is, get your stuff out, learn where you're gonna take it, get it out, or come, you know, and if it's not out, by the time I get out there, we're gonna start moving, we're gonna start taking it. Then you get the question is, where do you take it? Well, we, at that time, we'd have to cross that bridge, where it might end up at that point, ends up going to a scrapyard.
My source says he's moving some of his stuff to Bill Hitchens Chicken Building to Southwest of Jonesville, Texas. And what I've heard he's moved over there is his vehicles, his big truck with that snowplow on it.
The bus.
Bus, some ve, uh, his other wagon, vehicle, wagon cars, uh, I don't know what else, but I've heard that he's started to move. It used to be right up to Curse House.
It's cleared out.
And now that row right there is all cleared out.
Not even run out by there, I haven't been out by there in a while.
So, but then we could just start the process with the other property, for the nuisance.
We could put it in the Chicken House, I would say, I would buy.
No, no, it's still in the county, we have to treat it the same way, it's on Main River Path. It's still by the new ordinance.
Oh, is that in town, or where is it?
I'm, I'm not sure where this place is, but.
It isn't a town, it's a corporate, it's a county ordinance.
But is that where the Chicken House is?
It's south of here, on Three-Fiftieth. But it's a county ordinance, and we're discussing, it has nothing to do with the fact that it's located right in Haven, it's still.
It's just moving into another location in Mitchell County, there's a pilot over there, if somebody will let it, that's what's happening.
You know, at some point, part of the issue we have is, there's only so much any of us can do.
Right, right.
If, if we go to hearing on Tuesday, and one way or the other, this ends up getting drug out, or we win, but the judge gives him time, I just have a sneaking suspicion that no matter what happens, that property is gonna end up somewhere else, on somebody else's property.
Personal property, yes.
It would be.
Uh, yeah, certainly doing it, so.
It would be nice to just, I mean, who wouldn't wanna just go in there now and say, you know what, we're taking this stuff to the scrapyard now? I would not recommend that, I think that would get us, everybody into a hell of a lot of trouble. Um, so like right now, he's taking stuff. I, I think that's perfectly legal, there's nothing we can do to stop it.
Yeah, I mean, it's his stuff.
Then we can do stop it.
Yeah.
And if he wanted to hurry and, over the weekend, and get it out, there's not a damn thing we can do about it. He's taken it to, it's somewhere else, and then that's another problem. Um, I just have a sneaking suspicion, and maybe I'm wrong, and if somebody thinks I'm wrong, speak up, I have a sneaking suspicion that we're gonna end up dealing with that problem regardless. What it becomes is an issue of, does the next person involved, uh, take a different approach than Mr. Kephart, you know, is that next person gonna be more cooperative, I don't know. Um, I know names of them, but I don't know who it is, but, um, or, um, or why, I, I guess, I know, I know the place Cindy's talking about.
This one, I think that if we could just do the hearing on Tuesday, and do what you said, do your God, the judge.
And if it gets given to the other address, then, then area, send that property owner a letter of, yeah.
Right, then doesn't your complaint come to Amanda, Amanda goes out and tells him, you gotta get rid of your stuff, I mean, there was a place that I, that she went and talked to, and they cleaned it up, there was standing appliances, and they had more than two unlicensed vehicles in the yard, and there was a complaint, and got taken care of that way.
Yeah.
So, it just falls, I don't know.
Right.
That doesn't happen.
What, so you're saying sixty days? You know, whatever the judge, Aaron's not.
Whatever the judge.
Well, I guess, that's what I'm wondering is.
Is this a motion?
Do, do you guys, I guess the way I would prefer it is either, try and reach some kind of stipulation before Tuesday, give him a certain amount of time. If I have to go in there Tuesday and do a hearing, I'm not particularly inclined to be very cooperative then at all, you know? I'm not, I'm probably not inclined to agree to thirty days, sixty days, a year, one week, I'm probably just gonna go in there and, and say, my position is, judge, order the stuff out of there. And at that point, um, I can see that it's happening, the judge would say, well, what am I supposed to order, happen to it? I don't care, judge, and my problem, I just want it gone, and.
The county's property now.
The land.
The land, yeah.
Yep.
But then why, where on the secondary road is it clean it up? They got more important things to do than clean up.
I, I don't know, I mean, we just have to, I don't know.
Aaron, Aaron, we've got, we've got all kinds of different ideas going around and stuff like that, and I guess I'm just, here's my, here's my thought. The Burns sent you an, sent you a proposal as far as the four-month thing, where he would get the stuff out in four months. It shows like, it sounds as if they are willing to, and I don't necessarily like that either, I just soon be out tomorrow, but if, if they're willing to give a little bit and do that four months, and hopefully that would be, the judge would say, okay, both parties are, you know, the county wants him out, and Kephart has said that he, he's gonna get out, but he wants four months, so that, to me, that'd be, the judge would be more inclined to sign it off and be done with it. And after four months, it's, he's out of there, no matter what, he's gone. And in regards to who owns the stuff, um, if it's a problem, I guess that's what we're gonna have to deal with at that time, but at least we crossed the first step and got him out of there. It, just in my small mind, is that if, if his stuff is on our property, he's, he's violating, he's violating his rights to have his stuff on our property, but I don't know what the legal end of that is, but so I'm all for doing the four months, and hopefully the judge agrees to it, so that's where I'm at.
Yeah, um, so here's what this, I don't know whether you guys are thinking this or not, but, um, but whether I'm dealing with county attorney stuff, or whether I'm dealing with private practice stuff, people I represent always say, or usually say, Murphy, what do you think we ought to do? Uh, sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't, most of the time, people do end up listening, sometimes it's a long way to get there, but usually, but not all. It's always client's choice, if somebody were to say to me, Murphy, what would you do? I thought about this, since it's the first time I'm thinking about this. It's just the first time in front of you guys, having articulated, um, if it were me, not necessarily knowing how to predict what's gonna happen, um, I know what my position is, but I, I don't, you know, I don't have control of the ultimate outcome, there's always uncertainty there, I would probably be inclined to say, okay, we'll take your proposal, Mr. Byrne, we'll give you, tell that June date, I, I want the judge to issue an order on the forceful entry and detainer right now, indicating that when that date comes, the writ of removal issues without further notice or hearing. I don't, I don't wanna come back and do this anymore. I don't wanna have to walk into a courtroom again, I wanna be able to click an email, send a proposed order, have the judge sign it. That's what I would want to have happen, and I would say, if you guys, Burns, Kephart, if you guys agree to that, then to avoid a whole headache, God only knows what else can happen, I'll agree to it. But it's gonna be those terms, forceful entry and detainer issues now, writ of removal doesn't issue till then. What he's gonna do with that stuff in the meantime, I mean, it sounds like maybe we have an idea, but I just have a suspicion that that's gonna happen anyway. I don't know. But, so, you know, if somebody were to say, Murphy, what do you, I'd say, okay, well, accept your proposal to the terms I just described, if you don't wanna take it, then we're gonna have that hearing on Tuesday. I'm not agreeing to any continuance, I'm not saying, let's kick this down the road two weeks, I'm not saying any of that. We've got a date set for Tuesday, we're gonna go on Tuesday, unless we have signed documents by the judge prior. But I would say, if you guys will sign this, agreeing to these terms I just laid out, fine, we'll give you the four months. That's my thinking, that's kind of my personal thinking more than, you know, I mean, just because, just, everything is so muddy. Everything you think is not gonna be muddy, turned muddy, right? I mean, that's why lawyers exist, and that's why courts exist, because if everything was simple, we just wouldn't do any of this. Um, so I just have a suspicion that things are gonna, I would push for resolution on Tuesday, a little bit mixed on whether we would get it.
Well, maybe go with that, though.
I just thought, since he came to us with June, I'd go back to him with an earlier date.
Certainly can, I mean, but like I said, I'm, it's, you know, we get down, uh, to a time crunch, uh, uh, but okay, I've got, the rest of this week is, uh, pretty well solid for me. I got depositions in another case, I'm, things are getting so jumbled up, I don't remember what day it is, Monday and Tuesday, or Tuesday and Wednesday, I don't remember, but I think it's Monday and Tuesday, maybe Tuesday, I don't know, but anyway, that's gonna occupy a lot of my time, um, I fit this in to three-thirty on Tuesday, I think I've jostled things around where I'm gonna do it, but it's gonna be tight. So I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm not gonna have a bunch of time to go back and forth with Mike Byrne on this thing, um, between now and Tuesday. And I, I also tend to be a fairly impatient person anyway, so, um.
If we get okay with it, June twenty-fifth, the judge can sign that off before Tuesday?
I would anticipate the judge would approve it immediately.
If they get it done that fast.
I, I, I think the judge, you know, 'cause it's electronic, everything's electronic, binding. Um, and, um, here's what would typically, here's how I approach, and now, I could go back and say, we're gonna shorten the June time, Mike, we're gonna shorten, here's what we proposed, but this is it, I can't go back and forth anymore, it's like, I don't have time to be calling hearings again. Um, so I would want guidance from you guys on what you want that date to be, number one. But I don't wanna have to fight back and forth with him. If we get resolution, typically what you do is you, um, get everybody's signatures here, my signature, Mr. Kephart's and his attorney's signature submitted to the judge, typically, uh, what I do is submit it for, um, online, for electronic binding, for the judge to approve it, it goes into the judge's queue, they call it, it's what the Brits use for line, but it goes into a line of stuff to be signed. I usually email the judge, copy Mr. Byrne in on it, and say, okay, uh, we just dumped this stuff, uh, into your queue. Um, would you go in and look at it, and if you're okay, sign it? And that, usually a judge then gets the, you know, will go in and say, yeah, yeah, I'll go in and look at it. Typically, a judge approves it, judge unhappy, I mean, if a judge wanted to, a judge could say, I'm not approving this. I don't know why a judge would, but a judge could, and if that were to happen, then we'd have the hearing on Tuesday. My suspicion is, just given court resources, uh, scheduling and everything like that, if we come up with an agreement, I suspect the judge, I can't speak for a judge, but I speculate that they would probably be more than happy to say, all right, get this off my schedule.
We ought to go till June earlier, get it going.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I guess.
They don't sign it, we'll go till Tuesday then.
Yeah, if they don't sign it, we'll go till Tuesday, otherwise, you know, another month, it's been there how long, you know, a month?
Thirty years it's gone on, so.
Yeah, so, another month.
Four months.
Yep, and, you know, if it gets rid of it all, good, you know?
So I could, um, um, telling, I don't, I have, so I could say, we're acceptable to these terms that I've laid out, otherwise, we're having the hearing on Tuesday.
Yep.
Um, I don't know that there's any requirement, um, that the board vote on this. I maybe kind of preferred if the board did, just because it maybe, what I don't want to have happen is, see, when it comes to like criminal cases, right, um, the county attorney has the discretion, and the county attorney runs the case. Um, when it comes to a civil case, some people would say, I'll get the county attorney to do what he want. Yeah, maybe, but at the same time, it's like, well, it's a little different, I mean, I'm carrying out this litigation in the name of the county, and the county has elected officials, so I kind of like a little formal approval to do this, so if somebody later comes back and says, well, that wasn't authorized, you know, so I guess, I would ask, I don't know if it has to be any kind of written resolution or anything, but, uh, somebody could, or.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, um, they don't have to be very elaborate, just to, you know, say, yeah, Murphy, go back, accept the proposal, or rather be, Murphy, make the proposal under the terms you described, and go to court on Tuesday. And then if that was, if that was voted, you know, that affirmative vote, I would feel like I had that emotion.
Sense of the motion, June twenty-fifth deadline now?
Well, that's up to you guys, I mean, I don't, I mean.
Do that on May first.
May, June, I don't know if it makes a damn bit of difference, to be honest.
I think it's still gonna be there, come June twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
I have a suspicion a lot of it will be, maybe some of it'll be gone, I don't know, maybe they'll surprise us, I don't have any idea.
But they jump on that.
I don't know, you're not, because I think you're inclined to probably be.
Can you put that stipulation another, probably, and we'll clean up, are you enjoying that?
That's what the rate is, that's what they're asking.
Well, yeah, that's what it will be, it's just. Well, yeah, that's what it will be, it's just that we have to, if they leave, but we have to be prepared that it, uh.
They'd say they leave all the tires, and that's just an expense.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, if you have it in there, it could completely.
Houses full.
So I think maybe what you're saying is, I mean, is have an agreement in there, you have all this out, if you don't, the writ's gonna enter, and we've got permission to do whatever we want with it, right?
Right, but I would, line up to be, you know, if it takes what's worth anything and leaves the junk, that's kind of a.
But anything.
But if you took it all, get rid of it all.
Yeah, so.
If we do this, get rid of it all.
Yeah, so come June 25th, if there's anything left, we're scrapping, or doing whatever we want with it.
It'd be better to have it, we want the property clean on June 25th, right? I mean.
E, e, either clean, because I mean, I can't, I can't force him to do it, so there's always a possibility that it won't be clean, that's why it might not be a bad idea to say, if it's not. If June 25th comes and this stuff isn't out of there, then we're gonna move it wherever we want and do whatever we want with it. In other words, I guess the way I would word it, uh, in court documents is, you know, I'd say, whatever's, whatever's left as of, uh, June, June 25th is forfeited to the county.
There you go.
And then. That would avoid. Then at least having to have the argument about, well, now it's June 25th, what do we do now? Do we have to preserve this somewhere? You know, because like I said, you don't wanna get to a situation where, like, a landlord sometimes, and they, you don't wanna get into a situation where you guys end up like a ba, a bailey, where you're like, oh, now we gotta put this stuff in storage for him, you know, you don't want any of that, so maybe it is better to just say, June 25th, what's left, is forfeited to the county.
Yeah.
Aaron proposed a motion, and one of us will say it, propose the motion.
Okay, um, so, uh, the motion that I would, uh, request you have proposed is, um, uh, Murphy, uh, go back and make the proposal that you've described with the added condition that come June 25th, whatever's gone, it's forfeited to the county.
Larry, so moves.
Okay.
Motion second, any other discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Sidney.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Motion passes, any other thing coming through?
Do you want me to, do you want me to file an abatement for, with Rachel to get rid of those taxes?
Should see what happens. By Tuesday, or?
Well, it's county property, we would normally abate it.
Right now, right? There's no going back on that.
I guess.
I mean, we'll know the numbers, if, if we ever go to sell, we'll know what we have into it, I have filed, has all that, so.
How big is that?
I have, I did do a tax statement, I just did that.
I, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Attorney? All right, so I will. Uh, 153. Okay, um, yes, it's two of you here now.